The workshop of July sixth, twenty one, five thirty is called all. Yes, pray hard for the case in place.
Lord, we just gather here, and Lord, just ask you to bless this council, and bless the decisions that we made, that the decisions be made for the best of the community, Jesus. Lord, just ask you to guide us, and ask you to strengthen us, and continue to hedge your protection that you seem to have around us through this year's pandemic. Lord, just ask all these blessings in your name, and just pray, amen.
Amen.
United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and in the visible liberty of justice for all.
Number one Savannah Frederick, Carrie Brantley-Bill, and I call at City Hall, Mr. Kenneth Brantley.
Yes. I'm just wondering why the drop boxes was removed?
It was removed because every time it rained, it would flood inside of that box.
But you.
And it would ruin checks.
Oh, okay. But you understand now it's causing the issue. Because my mom came the other day to pay her water bill.
She didn't make it to the line?
No, she didn't make it. She fell.
Both of you got hit.
And spent two days in hospital. They had to have a taxi surgeon to come in and fix her liver. That's, you know, the drop box was a lot. I understand that it caused it had water flooding in, but you got a lot of elderly around here that could really happen to anybody else.
Yes, I understand. Maybe that's something we need to look into and try to revisit, put in something.
I need you.
Maybe that's something we need to revisit. I know we discussed that before, Miss Wynn, that was one of your concerns was.
I was concerned.
And my mom is seventy, she's seventy-four, and I got two aunts that were in their eighties, and they come up here every day. I mean, they come up here to pay their water bill, so, you know, it's.
Well, can we get another drop box?
Where they can drive up? Is that what they did before?
That's what they need.
If you get one, you need to get one that will get order in.
Huh? What happened?
Get one that don't, we can't get order in.
Well, the regular mailbox does not get ordered in. At post office, I mail. Where do they get those boxes from? Can you order them?
We can.
That's what I'm saying, because we do not, that mailbox does not get ordered.
That's what we had before, and we had all of the leaks.
Well, that was a very outdated and old.
And not only that, it was used, wasn't it? I think we got it from somebody. It was used. It wasn't brand new. It was used. That box we got, somebody donated that to us.
It also had a slot cut in the back of it, which a regular mailbox would not have.
Somebody, I think, donated.
But they would have to see, they would still have to get out the car to open the thing to put it in, unless you get one with just the opening on the.
We can get the one like you grab a lock at the post office.
Like at the post office, you'd have to get a regular postal.
You would put it closer to the curb. You know what I'm saying?
You could even get a regular locking mailbox with a slit and put it at the height where a car drives up, and it would be at the window height, and those don't get rained in. And they're not very expensive, maybe seventy-five dollars.
Where would that be?
Even at low, it's like a low.
I mean, but where, it would be a regular mailbox.
A locking one, so the clerk would definitely, the clerk would have the key to go out, to check it.
The only problem with those is that they're lightweight like ours out here. If you get our mail in has a lock in, is they're lightweight and it wouldn't take nothing to rip one off, off the.
Or if you seam it in.
Or bust it open.
If you seam any of it down?
That's the metal part itself is what I'm talking about. Sometimes, I'm talking about the small ones. It wouldn't take nothing for a young'un to walk by and grab it. You'd have to get one like these popping out, one of the big ones.
I've got six routes, and I haven't had any full mail.
But they're not full of money from paying the bills.
Well, they're full of cash, but they don't know what to have to do, why I want to give it.
Little social security checks and everything like that?
Yeah.
They're not supposed to drop cash, though, correct? So it's only supposed to be checked?
A lot of people don't drop cash.
Still drop cash.
That was the deal whenever the pandemic hit. That's the reason we removed it and put the one in the office, is because nobody wanted to put cash in it, because it was so unsecure.
How was your mama doing?
Ah, well, she's doing, she's getting better.
Is she home? Is she's home now?
No, she's with my sister. She can't be alone for a while.
So Candace, how much were a box like that?
Just a regular mailbox with the lock is probably under eighty, definitely under a hundred dollars. They do make nicer ones, bigger ones, but anything is going to be under two hundred dollars, including even a pole to put it in and a bag of saccharine. And that way you could adjust it to whatever height you needed. You could pull up with a car, decide what, determine what height, and then mail it at that, at that height.
We could, we could put one in with a steel or steel base on it, and we could drill into the asphalt, put it up to the sidewalk, into the asphalt, they can pull it out, they can do it, like put four holes down with a, like a aluminum rebar, put all thread coming up, put some epoxy in there, and then you can pull it out with a truck. Potty it down.
I see what you're saying.
All thread down there, and you can bolt it right to the ground. See, what they do, they're gonna, they have to match that with a truck.
Can we have this put on the agenda for the regular meeting to vote on? We can't vote at workshops.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Is there anything we can do for the mom now? Which aunt is she at? Which aunt's house is she at?
No, she's there, my sister.
Oh, you're sisters, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Number two, Kayla Miller. I'm sorry for, um, did you like that? I've got to keep it due to the proximity. And also, it's probably too, like, since this workshop, can I add an item, number fourteen? Is that okay with you? Sir? That's right. I just want to make sure it's just. An update. Okay, Mr. Miller is not here. Number three, Linda Wilson. Number four, Net Weeks and Mary Taylor, Fall Festival, coming hallway.
That's, y'all make over there, it's not on my there. Ever?
Not there's not a mic over here, I'm guessing now. It's up to you.
Oh, how are y'all doing this evening? Okay, so, once again, we're, we are, we're going in, my daughter will be graduating this year, so we are looking at, um, thank goodness, project graduation early this year. I think we have, gonna have a good group of parents that maybe are gonna help out. You know, y'all know we usually do the haunted hallway for project graduation every year, I think, and that said that she had already gotten that approved previously for the next upcoming years. So what, we had this idea to see if we might could put together a fall festival for the younger kids. You know, like, the schools used to have it, for some reason, they decided that, um, they wanted to do spring fling, so. I don't know, I don't think spring fling has gone over well. The fall festival usually would bring out parents, grandparents, you know, the kids would put their costumes on. It was cool. They'd play little games, buy tickets, and we'd have cake walks or maybe a chili cook-off, stuff like that. We were looking to maybe, to see if the city would help us to do that, to raise money for the hallway. Every year it's a lot of money for the hallway, the insurance and stuff like that, so. I'd spoken to Joey, I know they had, God cleared, took out a building back here. I thought maybe, what if we could do, like, plant a little pumpkin patch, you know, and just have a little, put it all on tickets, candy apples, maybe a cake walk. Don't even know if we can throw it all together. I'm here to see if we can, how the city feels about it, and if we could get approval. I'd like to have it on this ground, so we could put maybe like a makeshift gate or something like, where we usually have the haunted hallway, and put up signs, you know, the Fright Fest is coming soon, you know, maybe put a couple monsters, you know, behind the gate, just to give people an idea, because I don't know if any of y'all went to the one in Bonn State last year. I'm not trying to knock any town, I'm just saying, but they, they came over here our first year and sent molds. Every single one of their rooms was exactly the same as our rooms, okay? Now, if you had one or two, even three, even five, you know, I'm gonna say, well, that's like, well, we ain't be doing it. But no, it was every single one. Y'all, we waited in line over there for their hallway. However, they're getting their information out, because it wasn't even scary. It was like Disney World. We paid twenty dollars a person for a fast pass, and I waited in line over two hours. There were people there from Pensacola, there were people there from Weewall, I mean, all over the place, so it really. I'm hoping that we can do better with our advertising and stuff like that this year, because our hallway was way scarier. The scariest thing to me over there was, you had to go up and downstairs in a black building. That was the scariest thing to me, was, I mean, and it was gonna fall down and break our neck or something, you know? And these old people in there, I'm telling you, I don't know how they're getting, they have little baby children in there. So however they're getting people, they're insurance, but they are, they are having a lot of participation from the school that's helping, so. I'm thinking a lot of the, you know, everything that's going on, you know, there's been a crappy couple years for our seniors, our kids as a whole, for Halloween, for everything. I just think it would be a good thing for the community if we could come together and do like a little fall festival and help to raise money, like I said, for the haunted hallway, so we can have, so we can put a little bit more into that.
Do you have a timeframe or what?
Well, I was thinking late, we don't have an actual date. I was thinking, you know, mid to late September. Got a lot going on. We'll be doing a prayer march during that time, too, and I'm like, trying to coordinate that, help coordinate that for Washington County, but, um, we don't have an exact date. We just wanted to see what the city would think about trying to, you know, help us do something like that, and, um, like I said, if we could, like, maybe a little pumpkin patch. I mean, it'd be crazy if we could do a corn maze somewhere, but we don't have that. But that's a lot of revenue. That's a lot of revenue. People go from, I'm talking about miles and miles and miles to do stuff like that, so.
Are you wanting to utilize like a community center to set up tables or booths or cake walk like they did?
Well, that would be awesome. If we could have like a suite room, or if we could get people to do cakes, do some face painting. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking like, you know, the little booths, you know, like, maybe, I had some ideas. Maybe we could get the, the city of Wausau to do the dunkin booth, you know, the fire department, maybe that let them, let us use that. Maybe, um, the sheriff's department. They came out last year at Wausau when we had the Halloween thing there, and I know Christie Colmets and the police officers really came out with their spooky doo stuff, you know? It was kind of a competition for the, um, the booths out there. I ain't gonna say who won.
That, that was the reason I was asking you to talk about doing something similar to what the elementary school used to do, and the community centers to set up tables like booths there.
Well, and I was thinking maybe have our, and some of our beekeepers, maybe if we can get a honey booth, or, you know, just stuff that's, that's going on in our community, and maybe.
I don't have a problem with it. I guess we just need to, you know, if we could get down a date, get, especially if you use this one, if that's rented out, for that to be scheduled, but otherwise, I don't see any need.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about inside, you know, I was just thinking about the outside grounds here, what we usually use to, you know, for the hallway. I mean, it would be nice to be able to have access to bathrooms unless we put, had to put a porta potty, because that's what we would have to, to do otherwise. That's what we do for the haunted hallway. We get, I mean, I hadn't even thought about that. I mean, that's great if the city would like to, um, because like I say, we're just gonna do like quarter, I don't, I don't even have, I just know we're gonna try to do everything on tickets. You know, like, um, so many tickets, maybe have some little, maybe even possibly a small hayride, so, um. I was just thinking of the easiest way, you know, tickets, like they did at the, at the school, at the elementary school. You know, the kids buy so many tickets, you do so many tickets for this little booth, I mean, it's a, I don't even know if we can put it all together. It's a couple months away, and that's fixing to go on a month-long journey.
That was all, that's about the community center, because, I mean, we know the issues with the insurance for the haunted hallway, but, you know, we, we let out the community center or events, well, that's why I'm over there.
Well, I mean, what would be the cost in that? Just trying to figure cost effectively, unless the city's gonna partner with us.
As a fundraiser, I would, I would think that we would donate that, that's one.
That's an awesome, that's, that's, you know, more than what I would even, I wouldn't even think to ask for that, and that's awesome. That'd be great. So, if we could, you know, and if, I don't know, I, we're just, we're just trying to get some stuff going early. I'd love for our kids to build on a senior trip this year, because they weren't able to last year, or the year before. We live once. We're just doing this one time, y'all, so.
Thing is, like that's old candy. We all, we all went to it. They park all the way down the highway, so it's gonna go over.
Oh, yeah.
The problem she's gonna have is like, just anytime there's a volunteer.
Yeah. I'm hoping that I have a good group of senior parents that will fall in. I mean, the Chomoses, y'all know them from Chipley, so they're, they're heading up the presidency. I thought it was gonna be like pulling teeth and breaking arms, but they started it ahead of me. I was like, well, thank you, Jesus. So I've got, y'all know the Chomoses, head of ROTC, his wife's also a teacher. I'm thinking we got Beth and Raymond Sheffield's kids graduating, we got Joey Tharp's kid graduating, we got.
My Aiden's a senior over at Burnham this year.
We, yeah. I'll be glad to get your name, ma'am, before you leave here today. She's got a grandbaby graduating this year. We have a real good, not that we haven't improved it yet, I'm not trying to say that. I'm just saying, our kids have been together. I'm just hoping and praying that, you know, if we don't try to do something, then nothing's gonna happen, so.
So pick a date so that the council could vote on it at the, at the meeting. Not today, you don't have to pick a date at that. The count, but for the council to vote on it, they have to clear the, the date.
And what would y'all think? I mean, I don't know what's on your calendar for the community center either. I mean, it would also depend on that, what your calendar is for that.
With the, the net of the board, however y'all are gonna do it, and then you can, with Tracy, um, if you can pick a timeframe.
Yeah.
She's got the calendar, and she'll be able to tell you what day it's available.
Yeah. And what do y'all think about that? I mean, what do y'all think about trying maybe like a chili cook-off and, I mean, I don't know. I mean, what we'd have to. And some cake, a cake walk, I mean, just something for the. The little kids haven't had much.
If you're partnering with, uh, TDC is available to y'all, the Church Development Council of Rattan. If you, if you're partnering with them, it can't get to a private engine, but they can, they can help y'all out.
First time, we support the haunted hallway every year. If it's your first time, the senior.
It can, but it has to be with the effort that, to bring people from, without the county.
That's what I'm saying. They're, they're doing the.
If you're gonna market it just to Washington County, they're not gonna be interested.
If they're doing the whole hallway, they're bringing people from this county and Weewall.
Oh, yeah. Well, the one at Bonn State, no, I ain't lying. I don't know if any of y'all went to that. I can't believe it. Fifteen dollars if we had to get in, or twenty dollars for a fast pass. That fast pass was two hours. I promise I'm not exaggerating at all. I couldn't believe it. So, and like I said, it was, we started it, and then we didn't do it last year because of the COVID. We thought that it wouldn't be a good idea, you know? They did it.
Yeah, last year?
We did it. They went ahead on with theirs. But, you know, we really, we had this idea this year to do like a throwback on the haunted hallway for, like, the Fright Fest. We want to do like the old, like Fright Night and the Poltergeist and the Shining, and maybe a bunch of old flicks, you know?
Hey, this is televised.
You're live on Facebook and YouTube right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I, I will, I just. You could've told me that before I even started talking.
Well, it just occurred to me when you started giving out ideas.
You could've signed the waiver. Y'all know me.
Over here at what you can, John, and get it through, and we'll.
And when is the next meeting? When should I, when do we need to? I mean, we need to start running with it if we're gonna do it.
Our meeting, our meeting, that nineteenth, yeah, the nineteenth.
Does that give you enough time to get your date?
Oh, I can get a date before then. I just need to start working and all that, if that, I mean, I'm not, that's not giving me much time.
Our next meeting is the nineteenth at five thirty.
Nineteenth at five thirty?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Number five, Foundation, Michelle Cross.
She's gonna give you a pass out. He's from the Foundation, specialists that came, I called four, only two service this area. They came out and looked underneath the building to see what's causing the floors to fall and stuff in the areas that it is. The first one's gonna be from Ramjet, Jack. They've got some pictures from underneath the building in there. His concern was termite damage, but he didn't go the whole area. There is termite damage underneath the park corner where the, uh, Council on Aging sits. But they don't want to do anything, so they did not supply with the estimate, because they wants to get a termite inspection. They saw no live termites, but he wants us to replace the wood and do a termite inspection. All they do is jack up the building. Okay, the second one, they don't have an estimate in there, but there are pictures. The second one is from Alpha Foundation from Panama City. If you'll follow along, there's an estimate on the front page. They use steel beams. They replaced the wooden ones. They sister them side by side with steel beams, and they have a steel jack that they, they make a foundation under and jack up the building. They can do it without messing with the old beams that are there, so in the future, that you can go back and replace the ones that are damaged. But there's, again, he did the whole, almost the whole building. He could not find, he found termite damage at the same end, but he didn't find it anywhere else other than in the corner right here. If you look right here, the floor is sagging. That is because there is a beam underneath there laying on the ground. It's not even holding the building up. Um, there's pictures there. Picture number, um, two is, is that, and it's caused by termite damage in that bathroom right there. On the back of page one, you'll see a diagram. All the red lines is where you will put steel beams and the jacks. Underneath the front door, there is no termite damage. It's just there's nothing holding up the floor. That is, um, something that needs to be fixed, with just jacks not worrying about the, the steel beams. There's termite damage in area, anywhere there's the steel beams, that's where there's termite damage. There is no live termites we can find. If you look at picture number, um, six, there's water pouring underneath the building right here in this corner where the two buildings were adjoining. Every time we get a lot of rain like Sally, it is shoving water up underneath the building, which is washing away the foundation. The good thing about the metal jacks and the steel jacks are adjustable, so if it does start to sag again, they can turn them, the guys can bring it back up, or they can lower them if need be. Like I said, he found old termite damage. He could not find any live termites. They do recommend, um, you got job details, and then basically on the back of that one, it'll show how the foundation was made underneath the jacks. They will put concrete or gravel underneath the jacks, support the jacks. He recommends, now, this is not, you don't have to do on the recommendations, it's called, the recommendations, it's called clean space. It's what you can do to preserve the ground underneath the building in the future, if you want to go back and do that. Of course, I know you wouldn't want to go with the hundred and seventy thousand dollars on, that'd be way, way too much. But later on, it is one for twenty-six, which helps keep the ground dry and the moisture from getting up underneath the beams to help prevent this from happening in other spaces of the building. He still recommends a termite inspection to guarantee that there's still not live termites, but they can do the work and jack up the building and put it where it needs to be, stabilize it, and then later on, the guys can, or somebody can come back and put new beams if you want to replace the wood beams. And that's Alpha Foundation. They're out of Pensacola. They have an office in Panama City. Ramjack doesn't even, they want us to replace the wood before they'll even give an estimate.
It's sad down there, too, y'all. We had to move the refrigerator for the.
Council on Aging, because of the termite, the damage. It's like I said, there's no live termites in it. The damage is done. But they did move the refrigerator to the other side of the room, because everything has to be moved at least ten foot from where they're gonna put these steel beams. But that is what is wrong with this floor. It's basically, the termite damage is underneath the bathroom cup here, but it's caused that. One beam's dropped to the floor, and you'll see it, it's laying actually on a pipe.
Is that the same beam that's running to the front door?
No, that's a whole different beam.
It's a whole different wall.
Okay, so we've got, not just that one at the front.
The one at the front door is not, um, is, is actually nothing wrong with the beam. It's just not, it needs something underneath it.
Floor, uh. I think it washed everything out.
No, it's not rotted. No, not on the front door, sir. No, not at the front door.
Beam that's on the ground?
That's under here.
Where it got, where it got, yeah, underneath the bathroom, termite damage, and it's probably.
It tells the ground.
It hasn't blocked underneath it.
So the original issue that we asked about?
Is the front door on Council on Aging.
It's just, yeah, I'm talking about the front door, though, that, it's just, what, came off block?
Yeah, basically, the water from going in that hole has washed it away. So he says they need to put some kind of thing here to keep that water from going underneath the building and flowing the other way. Like dig it, like.
Either gut or put up or?
Well, something, because all, both roofs come in and meet, and they run into each other, and all that water's pouring at that corner. And then it's running underneath the building towards the front. But this, I would say that it's a, as you can see, the estimate is, um, twenty thousand, two hundred, twenty-six dollars, twenty-five cents with its same-day savings, basically a bonus of fifteen hundred and one dollar eighty-nine cents discount. So the total would come to eighteen, seven, twenty-four, thirty-six, if you were to go with Alpha Foundation.
They did just defer this in. They did do our house after the hurricane. They came in and leveled our house, and they use. They use, and just exactly what Michelle said is exactly what they do. I mean, to every detail, and they had to go in a spot that big to do it, and they, they made it work, and they, they took the metal beams in there. I think they even put actually concrete where.
Yeah, they put concrete.
Your shore gravel, or this picture is. And I can tell you that on the original part of the house that they didn't do, because, you know, insurance was just paying for the specific part. You know, when you walk, you got the bounce, you, you can jump, they jump the jacks over there, it ain't moving.
Right, it, it will stabilize the floor. That's the only way to fix the front, is go, go to the steel beams right now, unless you want to hire somebody to put new wood beams underneath. It would be a much higher cost.
Is this something that has to be put out for bid?
It was. Basically, I can't meet the other, that's, there's no company that serves, this, only the company that services this area is Ramjack. And them, and Ramjack does not do the steel beams. They just jack up the existing foundation, and they can't do it with the termite damage, because it would just crush, so.
But it wasn't for that bid, you just calling off?
I called every company I could find. I went on the internet. I called four different companies, one even out of Dawson, Georgia. I called one in Tallahassee, never got a return call from, and those are the bids. I had the gentleman came out here, met with me. I took him around and showed him the areas of concern. In fact. And those are the bids. I had the gentleman came out here, met with me. I took him around and showed him the areas of concern. In fact, um, Alpha found this other part while he was under there looking at the other stuff. Um, that's, where we can see the floor is sagging right there and that's why, because there's the termite damage underneath that bathroom. It caused that to slip. Um, but they, these were actually, this is, yes, I did put out for enough bids, but this is, and there's no other companies around here that do it, so. There's no other, I, I can't get a bid from Dawsonville or not, that was part. They're all out of the area. And the only way Ramjack will give me a written bid is to go ahead and replace the wood and, and then call them back. But, um, they won't, they don't do steel beams. So that's, but anyways, that's just for your consideration, thought and just whatever y'all are gonna do, just let me know and I will return if I is called and have them come back out. If you want to speak to him, I can have, try to get him out here for a meeting. He's he's been here twice. He stopped one day on his way to the Phoenix Springs just to get an idea. And then he came back with the scheduled appointment that we had had to literally get underneath her crawl and check the areas that I showed him were facing concern. Okay?
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
My concern, I'm gonna think, Michelle, it tell you how good this, uh, or, uh, price wise. Month, six months, it good for six months, three months or a month?
It's
My concern is, this is nineteen thousand dollars. This is another nineteen thousand dollars to see if it gets better. And, um, so we're gonna have to, some of these jobs will be held out till, but that's just, that's just a fact. Uh, you know.
How long the price is good? Is that what you mean, Kelly?
Thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says it's thirty days on it.
Thirty days.
It's on, says it on the front there.
Yeah, we all know it's got to be done, so like, something to do. And I'd like to see it done before we do this floor, so. Uh, if that wall messed up right there, it's not showing the floor, so.
Well, we really don't need to have the, the carpet done in here until the floor's
No, so.
When we start working on the budget next month, I believe. So we can work on getting it factored in.
I have a question since the carpet was brought up. We, and I probably already know the answer. I may have asked it already. There's no way to stretch this to get rid of some of the?
No, ma'am, cause it's glued down. We tried.
Michelle, if we paid the deposit, would they, if we did pay the deposit, would they hold it past thirty days?
Um,
Most of his is gonna be more labor intensive than material. Mostly his work will be more labor than material. I would think he would hold it.
You think he would hold it?
Yeah, he should. He's, they're very, very nice people.
The deposit is three thousand dollars and I was wondering if we paid the deposit, could we go past the thirty days till we get the?
Would he hold it into our budget set?
Right. Well, also you can make payments. It doesn't have to be paid all at one time. Even if you make the deposit, you still have, you still have a payment. You can make payments.
A payment plan?
Yes, to have a payment plan.
Probably, probably.
But it would still be coming out of the budget year, so.
Yeah, two probably, still eighteen, seventeen, probably twenty thousand.
Will this fall pocket your heels that money? Will this fall pocket your heels that money?
It might, Sally, FEMA money, it, the rainwater helped wash some of them.
Ready for recovery money? It's coming directly to the city with that fall pocket money?
Maybe.
I think it shows as infrastructure. Yeah, this is, this is your main, this is your main infrastructure for the city.
Infrastructure is, but it was very specific about which infrastructure we could touch.
Cause you put the water source payments here. That's where water source.
Yeah, we'll have to read it and then.
Maybe we can find out more about that. And in the meantime, Michelle, will you find out if it would hold the deposit?
Yes, I will. I will email him.
Our next budget year.
I'll email him.
Anybody else have anything on this? Number six, sewer adjustment from Marie Torres.
Ms., Ms. Mary has been charged sewer since she moved in in two thousand and eighteen. She has not had sewer. She has a septic system. And I have figured a sixteen thousand, four hundred, I'm sorry, sixteen hundred, forty-six dollar in prison adjustment for her account. Which will be voted on at the meeting. But I did want to make you aware because it is a large adjustment.
This started in G, two thousand and eighteen.
When did we find out that it was going on?
It might, it was
Thursday?
Uh, I, I heard that because I, I did always notice it. I just didn't know that, uh, cause like Panama City, when you use the water, you pay the sewer. It doesn't matter. So it just never occurred to me and it was, we were talking and joking. You know, because I said, I just have to fill in up that, oh, and blah, 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 and I wish you guys had voted on that and she goes, well, why are you paying sewer when you have a septic tank? So that's the first. I knew that you didn't bid. So it was, it was just a, a fluke.
So you noted for a fact that there's a septic tank?
Yes, ma'am.
I can buy that.
Approved it somewhere.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we can't foots over there.
Yeah, I do that.
So we'll want to add that to the?
It'll be on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
How much is it total on that?
Sixteen hundred, forty-six dollars in prison.
No, you said sixteen thousand. I heard you.
I mean, I love you, but not that much.
I heard you.
When the, when, when the system was transferred from the old system to B, uh, Banion, the person that transferred the information must have caught it because they returned their deposit. We've
That was in March of two thousand and nineteen. That was long before Banion.
Before, okay, before me, they returned to her deposit of the extra money, but never changed it in the system. And I, I didn't make, I didn't put her in, so I didn't, I wouldn't know it because it, she was already in the system.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, you can't know who has septic and who doesn't if it's already in the system.
That's on the agenda. So that makes me
Never said a wrecked apartment building. I guess, we've done here. The, uh, the building back here, the old science lab, the new building, I guess it got flooded and the tiles got, it's bad. So all that's gonna be tore out. But I don't know when it got flooded. When Jimmy told me about it, either somebody turned the water on back there and didn't know. And then when I found out about it, I went there and looked at it and
Which building are you talking about? The separate building back here with the children? The other, the newest building on the property.
Back here. Behind them.
Yeah.
The little one in the hallway.
No, behind the hallway.
I don't know. The one building.
Yeah, that's the newest building.
Get married. That's the one.
Here.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
And what's it been being used for?
Now, Jimmy, I guess.
He was, the one turned it into his office for the wrecked apartment.
But it's not being used for anything, so.
It's not right now, but that's what he's been working towards.
Is it locked? So it's locked?
But someone turned the water on and water
It's got the lines from where we, the top left, it's all in the floor there. So I guess somebody turned the water on out there or he did. I don't know.
We don't know.
It flooded it. So we don't know.
It ruined the floor.
Well, our insurance paid a lot of this for it. Just gonna check on the insurance paying for that.
They said that all the tiles have been, it looks like flowers out there now.
I'm sure, so that's not safe to walk on either.
No, ma'am, it's not.
And I'm sure it's gonna be mold with it in, or what did you?
Yes, ma'am.
She won't be in that one.
Part of a railway wall, it's a little.
And I just say though, while we're talking about wreck, that the fireworks were fantastic. They were great.
Good job, Kelly.
I was really, really, thank you, Becky, for finding him like this.
So, maybe we'll get these and we'll get an extra. And maybe we can, maybe we need to put that on the agenda. Um, or at least at the next workshop to discuss how many minutes we want, what we want, so we can get with them, if that's reasonable with everyone and vote on it, get it done and get him set, so we're not
It was exactly fifteen minutes. I timed it from the start to the finish and it was exactly fifteen minutes, which he said and it was. We didn't get short of one single second.
Well, I'm saying if we, given the fact of what we went through and I know that everybody else, and I said it's going out next year, we need to get in place if everybody was pleased and go ahead and get that order been ready to make here. We got somebody set. And since we're still, this is kind of wrecked. I have a question. Do we know anything about the page? Did it take place? Was there any?
It did take place. Michelle? They don't have much money. Can they turn in for that?
No, but they, they, they did, it was a buck, breaking even. They did make a little.
They had eight contestants.
They had eight contestants?
They had eight. I did speak with Casey. I did speak with Casey, um, a few days ago.
They had some in the parade?
And, um,
Three of them.
There was eight total contestants. Um,
All right, number eight, vendor ACH payments.
Um, I remember we're showing all of our vendors for the past nine months. Ninety-three percent of them said that they would accept ACH payments.
Yeah, but there's a cost for that.
There is.
And we don't have the money right now. We do a little we, that is something that we have to have, I don't feel, that we have to have it.
Like I said, the reason that I've started looking into it is because we've had a couple of vendors that have not been receiving our payments, our checks in the mail. And when they're threatened to cancel our insurance, it gets a little hairy.
Um, but we need to make sure that we follow up on what checks are going out. If that's, if that's happening with one issue and then threatened, you said the insurance company needs to threaten to cancel?
Our health insurance.
Are you saying that I don't count? Well, I got it all time.
It mailed out plenty of numbers, not getting the checks.
How much did you say they returned in there again?
Nine hundred and ninety dollars upfront and a hundred and ninety-five dollars annually.
One nine the annual is? It is. Just working for the post office and there's issues at the warehouse and I'll say all of that. It is extremely rare for two checks from the same place mailed at different times, right when the insurance and fireworks.
For two different months.
Two different months to not get where they're going. To the point that my postmaster said it's impossible to not get where they're going. Because she would have constant phone calls about that. Letting I'll be aware of that.
I think we should leave it where it's at for now.
Leave it what?
I think we should leave things as they are for now. I think we should leave things as if they are for now. Personally, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but. It's, we're, we're in work, so we can, we can put it on agenda. We can leave it. Pay it up at the time.
Would you rather have a return receipt on a check? I'm just asking, cause you're, we pay.
They called me and I said, it didn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter to you.
I don't
So you're fine either way with it?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not waiting on, on the money. So it's like, whenever it gets there, it's fine.
What is ACH like a, a payment?
Like a direct deposit?
Well, Venmo is how she does all hers and most of the people in their business do Venmo. They'll charge it down. You didn't get your money like that. You want it instantly or two dollars for some other government. Hey, if you want anybody a check getting somewhere, open your Venmo account and drop exactly the amount of money you want to spend, I know they get it.
You could put a return receipt on, on a check if it's very important. If they're saying they're not getting it and you want to know if they're getting it or not, they'll have to sign for it when they get it. I mean, it's a dollar something. I mean,
Well, they have to sign, if you send it certified, it's around six dollars and they're gonna sign the, the scanner and
Well, just the return receipt's only, what, a dollar and few cents?
But there's a digital copy of their signature when it's scanned automatically if it's certified. You don't even have to get the return receipt because you got the proof digitally.
Let them sign for the check when they get it. How much is that cost? Two dollars?
All right.
Number nine, requests to remove trees from RWR full mill.
So we have two different quotes. The first is for the four hundreds. And the second is for, I believe it would be the two or three oak tree. But if combined together, it'll be a total of nineteen hundred dollars to have them removed.
All the person put in the debt? All the person put in the debt?
Yes, ma'am.
This wasn't bid out though, was it?
No, it has to be bid out. Not given.
Yeah. So you have to get So it has to be bid out to, so it will have to be bid out.
I wouldn't look at them. And I hate that it was a bid out. For the record, that was a pretty good draw. All right, number 10, combining banks slash debit cards.
Um, I know that we had discussed a little bit before about combining all of our bank, all of the accounts into one bank. Right now we have two banks. Um,
How many accounts is it? Even like forty something? No, I'm just saying it's a ridiculous amount.
There's a total of fifteen, I believe, accounts.
Fifteen accounts is a lot for somebody to have to
File.
File it every month.
It is.
That's prime consuming.
And I just speak with our auditor and he said that that wouldn't be a problem to combine the banks.
We're still don't have the same amount of counts. We're just gonna do that and put them at one bank instead of two.
We have talked about closing out those CDs.
Yeah, I believe you said, I'm just gonna look into that before decision was made on. The two CD accounts, you were gonna check and see as far as one was a grant, remember?
Yeah, we needed to get more details on that account from your records.
I think we need to see what we're gonna do as far as the closing. If we're gonna close those or anything before we change banks. We need to, if there's two, that we need to get met right on before we know how to proceed with it.
Can we back up just for a second? The attorney was saying that we can up our, um, price on things that have to be bid out, like the state's price is like twenty-five thousand or something. Is that correct before it has to be bid out?
Yeah, so when you get into your, things that are mandated by the state that you have to, you have to not forbid, you don't get into that cap until second thing ever. Don't quote me on twenty-five thousand.
But we could, uh, then so that when we need trees cut and it, and it's an issue, a safety hazard or whatever, we could go ahead and get the trees. Well, it could
So they set the procurement process just aside?
I don't think y'all have a formal county policy.
I didn't read out the city.
You could, if you have a procurement policy, you can set it aside and then if you take those trees you're gonna cut, I know we're down here in the neighborhood. You got some across the right way. I can come up there and say. You got to send them across right away. I can come up there and say, you need to cut them, they're on the right away and they already go right away. You, you kind of go. How do you, how do we know they're on the right away?
They're on the right away.
What, what's the center line? How far do I set my?
Survey marker right there behind the tree. Survey marker right there behind the tree. I didn't want them down. She's the one that started playing about them. So, and it was supposed to have been just like put the dry trees and then she wanted the rest of them. So I brought it before. So I brought it for them and they wanted all of them put down, so.
Why, it, so there's only two trees that are actually causing her an issue?
None of them cause her an issue.
She's worried that an storm's going to land down.
Are they landing towards her house?
Yeah, like more than two of them.
No.
Well, well, one is.
No, no.
I mean, it's.
Y'all got to know I'm not cutting down trees.
I don't even know where that. What I'm saying is, if they hit our house?
They are not, they're going to shoot out.
Going to hit the house?
They're seventy feet from that. Eighty, probably more than that, eighty feet.
Well, the ones that I looked at that were marked in the wall, when all the people leaning at that and we've got a lot more that are leaning on ours.
If it's not a necessity then why would we start paying to get it?
I'm just talking, I told her something, y'all, that was, you held me and held me.
You put me on that?
I told.
I think if they're going to hit or cause her structural damage, then.
I didn't want to cut it down.
Not for cutting down.
I just told her, I kept on hounding and calling up here and hounding about them. So I just, I, I was careful what they wanted to do.
Remember we need to all take a ride down that road individually and let us see what the, check them out.
Right there at my driveway before you turn it back to the left a little bit.
You don't love them.
They're large.
Some of them are small, you said? You said they're small?
Some are, some are big.
And just before you get, about there, commit to the land, there's a.
I can tell you that he was raised those cracks there so. Because you're going to cut down them too.
No, I'm, I'm dealing with that.
They getting a better deal than you did. I have to look that. The tree, since it's on the issue, we do need to look at the tree shady ground. The, it's dead. It's over.
Yeah.
And I'm just scared it's going to get that monument.
That what?
The monument, it's right there, it's monument. It's right in front of the monument. It gets put up. That's all I'm saying. That tree's dead.
Is it near power lines or anything? I know where it is now. Is it dead?
Let me back up a minute. Just always having to ask yourself, is it not forbidden and if it needs to be? What is the minimum that we have set? Before something has to be cut out for bid?
I thought it was five hundred, just.
That was a minute for them. But some of them get out.
I mean, what, you know, everything that we need to do, me or somebody asks, was this bid out? So there's got to be a.
A cap.
A cap. I'm asking what that is. Is it five hundred?
I thought it was five hundred.
We need to clarify that, girl.
That would be part of the procurement costs.
Yeah, which we don't have.
Which you do need to adopt. It's really better to do that.
Usually have the sign. Much as I.
Yeah, there's, it's about.
Yeah, ours is five hundred.
I have the other five.
But that's the voting, though, like you said, that's just.
Just look at the procurement, if there ain't one, definitely go one.
Yeah. Can you, and, and we do not have one, Tracy?
Yeah.
Can you put this one together to review? So the debit accounts?
Yeah.
So we don't have to do this every time?
Exactly.
At least we'll know when we have to and when we don't.
To the meeting or the next workshop? She wants to know if you want it for the meeting or the next workshop?
Uh, the meeting is, you can have it.
I can.
Yeah.
We're waiting for next month for another workshop.
I bought the debit card. Look, the accounts will be opposed to ordering debit cards from the rec department fund so that they can have fuel and the fire department so that they can go get fuel when they need it.
For gas?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw the, I saw the fire department you had and.
They come and get the credit card when they need it.
Just the city has it? I saw the fire department, you could go there.
We just, okay. We have our, we just use the credit card right now, so we all have to share the credit card.
How many credit cards do you have?
Two.
For that? And who's using that now other than?
The city.
One, two, and three.
Fire department, rec, everybody.
When we need fuel, we go up there and get the card.
So we have two cards and three departments?
Yes, ma'am. And if rec could have a, um, debit card, it would just come directly out of their account.
If who could have one?
The rec department. Because they have their own safety account.
Well, maybe you're bad for.
Lawnmowers. And he usually comes and gets that after hours. He puts it off his phone card or pays cash, so we have to reimburse him.
Well, how often does he get it?
More often now than he used to.
Wait a minute, you said that the rec department has their own banking account?
They do.
I always said the rec department has their own banking account and they should all be under the city running.
It is, but we have our general fund, we have the water sewer fund, and we have a rec fund.
It's always.
So that we, anything from the rec department is cut from the rec fund.
Okay, good. You gotta be confused on what you said they had.
I'm sorry.
I understand.
It's still in the general budget, in the general fund, but they have their own separate checking account.
I want to see what we're good about that.
I just don't want to see a lot of cards out here. I mean.
We only need one more.
Huh?
We only need one more.
We were looking at these one for the fire department. Like I said, sometimes they go out after hours.
You said we have two and we have three departments?
Right. But Michelle keeps one in the door, one usually stays with me. If the guys need one, there's that one. The fire department have their own debit card, it's a whole straight from the checking account. And then the rec department have their debit card from the checking account.
I don't carry a card with me.
No.
I just go up there and get cards.
Get their fuel and bring that card and tickets back.
Yeah.
I've got a cash, I could circle eight. If it gives me a card, I can get it three quarters, seven and a week.
I thought before we used to have an account round, we had an account round.
They wanted to start charging.
They, they started that debit.
We had one at the hobby dog.
That's where we had an account round then. He used to go there and get gas. So what happened?
Other guy took over. Went out and processed the fuel and everything. It took, wait, wait, tell me quick.
So we can't have an account.
They're changing the system.
It's new people.
Yeah, there was a.
Yeah.
A ridiculous cost associated with that through Circle H.
Where?
Circle H.
About a year ago.
So where do you get your gas from?
Circle H.
Circle H?
Just not with their fuel cards.
Yeah. We used to have an account at Circle H. We'd just go in there and pay fuel aside, a third mile it down. And then he went to the cars like Tracy talked about.
And there was also a restriction on how quickly we would have to pay it whenever we got the bill out.
Well, since this station over here has changed.
That's up the aisle.
It's a major gas station. Maybe we could get in their account.
Do they have non-ethanol at, at?
Could we get in their account?
If they don't have non-ethanol, you can't get it for the mower. Use non-ethanol for the mower.
No, all the gas that I get from Circle H, it's all the ones with non-ethanol around here.
The debit card's going to come out of the rec department's money anyway, so why not just let them have a card out of the.
I'll take security ads if y'all find out. There may be miscommunication.
What did you expect?
I'll take security ads about that. There may be miscommunication.
Well, I understand too, just when you're trying to run a business and have a credit and they got to pay for the gas to get the next thing. So I could see them not wanting to.
Oh, I could, I would have to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to come out of their account. It's not moving out any of the other channels. So, see why it would be an issue.
So the request is they want to the fire department and rec or just rec?
Fire department.
Both. Mainly because I don't want a phone call at two o'clock in the morning from Jack asking me for a credit card.
Correct warrants, number eleven, correct warrant through security to balance.
That general ledger account is out of balance by like twenty-seven hundred dollars. I'll have you at the actual for the next meeting. It's been out of balance for years, long before I started working here. I spoke with Lee, our auditor, and he suggested that we move that extra money from the checking account to the water sewer fund because he believes that what happened is many years ago, money that should have gone to the water sewer fund went into the water sewer deposit fund instead. And that's the only way that we can balance it.
And I think the reason that's coming up is I asked for financial statements to be given to the council members once, so that we would know what we've got coming and going every month. And I know we haven't had them since I've been on the, as mayor. Um, but Tracy's concern was there not being.
And that's one of the things that we've been dinged for, for the past, I know, since two thousand fourteen to current. And so every year we have to answer for that.
So you're saying now that the auditor has a suggestion that we fix the problem?
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have the exact amount by the next meeting?
Correct.
And you also have him come to me if something is wrong?
I will.
Thank you. Number twelve, community center painting bids.
What did you guys want me to do with that? Because Ansel went up five hundred dollars on his bid and we did not actually award that. Did you want me to re-aduate her? Did you just want me to talk to Ansel and see if he would go back down to the original amount?
No, I don't talk to him.
Okay.
Would he be the only one?
He's the oldest.
He is, he's the one.
He's one of the white posters.
Uh-huh.
Well, things have gone up.
I have no problem putting them in.
For the original amount or did it?
Three, one, two, three.
It's eight seventy, it's eight seventy-one.
Can't tell me to do that, tell me to refer it that way.
And if we keep waiting on that.
Don't keep going up.
I see Timmy showed up. I don't very question after that. Does anybody remember what we were going to ask him? Yeah, it was about the time. Everything. Can you tell us what's going on at those science building with the tile?
Yeah, it looks like the water to the building got turned on. And as you may know, it was a science lab at this point in time, so it had about fifteen, uh, water, electrical and gas lines that were cut off about knee high. And it was like one of those was just barely cracked. So when the water in the building got turned on, it was just barely spraying and it basically flooded the floor in there. Whenever I walked in, it was just, um, it wasn't deep or anything, but it had touched that entire room. Uh, kind of went into, there's a carpeted area in between the two different rooms and all that tile and the carpets. It, it was neat, all people dried out before it's a mold problem instead of just a water problem.
And somebody said before you got here that you were fixing that up to the day of rec office?
We were looking at the op, uh, because right now we're just taking in one of these rooms in the very back to store all our football equipment and extra equipment. And we're looking at moving that stuff over there, but electrical, it's the same issue I ran into in my building over there. It just doesn't have electrical. I guess when they came in and moved the original electrical to all these, uh, meters back here, the only buildings they connected were the ones y'all needed at the time. So they're just missing that, that supply line, uh, that's going to have to be ran. And it was, it was pretty costly whenever I was looking at getting power from my building to get that connected the way it used to be.
I'm going to say your building. Are you talking about the old customer?
The, yes, ma'am, the old business head.
Now somebody broke my attention about the meters that are out there. They say that all those poles out there with all those meters are major, say this, things that are different. The, the electrical conduit holding that stuff up.
That's great, but I don't have that one out there. They all have wood stuff for that electrical stuff. They got to do it myself. The water line is fine.
So everything that goes to that hallway, big stuff, all those.
It's all hooked up, that's all hooked up here, yeah. The only, the only place that don't have water is our building because it fed off the wall before down. And, and that line went over the thing. That's the only building that don't have water right now. They have, when you have the red fluid, I'll, I'll say on my cross.
When I was looking at it, there's about fourteen panels, uh, potential boxes for, um, meters. And there's only two actual meters in, in the can.
Yep. And then in my room, in the room in here where I got the generator stuff, there's probably another ten panels in there. There's no print. Mr. Tom's the only person that, there's something red, I ask you.
Confirming with Tracy, she says there's two power bills. So I'm assuming one meter is for the front hallway in here and then the second floor of the community.
That is correct, yes.
That was separated back when we, it didn't change. From the old city hall to the new during the grant, they separated the electricity.
From this hallway.
Yeah, that was all combined everywhere for both.
Yeah, we tried to find prints in this place, but.
There should be some in the front door.
But they're all down. Cause the new school there is, I can tell you everything's going on over there. But the old school, Mr. Tom, I might go to. But Brian and them, we haven't seen him over there because we tried to find some, but I'm clueless on that.
I know that there had, there had to have been some because no power would have had to have happened when they were kind of due and they can't let you separate it.
Unless they got it somewhere, we don't know, maybe, but.
To confirm the electrical, the, the wood that does support all those meter chains out there is, it's in, in a shape where you definitely need to look at.
So we didn't have electrician come look at that?
That's.
Put two poles up on the back there.
If it's going to fit it, you can do it with the gal.
I got the gal and I still being forty.
You gonna hook them up, ain't you?
I heard that.
I can do it.
The man in the next picture got the trouble.
That's a big boy power too.
Yeah, you pop those little up thing every hair on your body, it sounds like five feet away. Yeah, you can pop those little up thing, every hair on your body stands up, five feet away, you're singing, pause the computer.
Number thirteen, employee pay raise.
Before y'all discuss that, um, I'd like to know what the house, something I would like to say. Start with, I, I feel it was unfair to, that the council gave raises to, as you all refer to, the guys, and not Tracy and I. They work outside, they heat and cold and get dirty, and we work inside and stay clean for the most part, but our jobs are equally as important. They do manual labor and we do mental labor. I get cussed and chewed out at least once a day by upset customers, on the most part, because I had called in a work order and they have not showed up yet to fix it. I have been called a racist, I have been called KKK to my face and over the telephone, because the south end of Church Street has not been paved. I get yelled at, cussed at for following ordinances, because I'm not able to adjust a bill that, when they have a leak, or maybe they just left their hose running. And let them know that has to be brought before council. I get cussed because they forgot to put out their trash and it didn't get dumped. Customers seem to think everything is my fault. And when I'm just following protocol, when they get mad because I cannot help them, they jump on the telephone and they call one of the council members or the mayor. And tell you that I'm rude and I'm stupid. And y'all run with it, you don't ever seek the truth. You believe everything they tell you, and it's not fair to me. You know, it seems like that y'all go against the ordinance to help them, but to make me and Tracy look like the villains. Tracy's one of the hardest working bosses, and this is the God's honest truth, that I have, that I've worked for and know. She does all she has to do, she misses many lunches trying to get all the things done you requested of her in each meeting, and many lunches she has to miss because she's having to be double up on webinars. Some days she, she has to just grab a bite while she's in the middle of all that, and doesn't have time to really eat. The phones ring nonstop for her. She's taught me a lot of things that I would've never dreamed I would be able to do, to try to help lift some of the workload off of her. Along with my normal duties of taking care of the water sewage banking and billing and refunds and work orders. I also take care of recreations, banking, and applications. I take care of all the incoming gas taxes, adware taxes, and traffic fines. I type the minutes, I do ordering and many other duties. I've heard the mayor and Ms. Baxter both say they wouldn't have her job.
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
Keeping the record straight and balancing audits up to date is not an easy task, but without it remembered, you would not be eligible for grants. She stepped into a position that had been neglected by the previous clerk, and now has the books balanced and the city moving forward, and you say she does not deserve a raise. She loves this city, and she does try to look out for it, and it seems like y'all wanna slap her in the face. She's not as worth as Jason, in my eyes, she's worth a lot more. And this, I was shocked, I didn't know till the other day how much she made. I thought she was making twenty dollars an hour. I made as much as her, having cravings in a jail, I meant pregnant in a jail. And didn't have near the responsibility that she has. I mean, yeah, I'm new to this kind of business, I've been in correctional office for twenty-five, over twenty-five years. I was a cashier, uh, trainer, I've been a produce manager. When I worked in South Florida, I worked in Harlan check frame, doing orders, order entry, what they call it. Her job, and I don't care about mine so much, because God's gonna provide for me, 'cause I'm faithful to God and I'm God-fearing. But she works hard for y'all, when I started here, she didn't want you wasting a penny trying to protect this city. She did, she would say, that costs too much, we can't, she would constantly watch the budget for this city. She constantly be, oh, the budget for the city, about extra spending. When COVID came, me and her both worked during COVID, with COVID. I cleaned out this room for the most part, and she helped when she had time, and she didn't have to answer the telephone and stuff. I went through cases and cases of files that had been piled up here for years that shouldn't even have been here yet, that were piled in these rooms. She cares about this city, she loves this city, she loves her job. And I feel, when I, she, I found she made sixty something out, I was dumbfounded, I could not believe it. And that's from the bottom of my heart, she is well worth it. And this is not her talking, this is Michelle, we have our differences, we're human. But she deserves to make what I thought she was already making, at least twenty dollars an hour, and that's for me, that has nothing to do with what's going on. It shocked me, and I'm, I'm fifty-nine years old, and I am, and, and I'm gonna say this while I'm up here and having a floor, I am tired of people spreading lies on me that are not true. If you wanna know something, you come ask, because I would tell you the God's honest truth, because I don't answer to man, I answer to God. I don't care if they're friends, yours telling you stories about me, if you wanna know the truth, come to me. I have lost a friend over lies in this town, and I cannot believe it. I have cried for the past week because of somebody lying on me in this town, and I know they told somebody knew the same of the lie. Quit accusing me of things that I didn't do, I will tell you if I was rude to somebody, I will tell you the God's honest truth. 'Cause like I said, I don't, I have a heart condition, I don't have a lot of years to live, but I answer to God for everything. That girl works her hind in offering you people, she does, I'm, I'm here with her all day. Like I said, we don't always get along, but I'm here with her all day long, she stresses over getting things done right for you. She deserves to make a decent amount of wages, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michelle, for your comments. Since Michelle opened the floor for that, um, one of the things that I called our attorney for, um, and I, and I have said, and let me rephrase it, I have said multiple times, I wouldn't have any one of them's jobs, and I wouldn't, because they do deal with a lot of stress. We've also said that at budget, we really wanted them to have a raise. At budget time, what we did with the outside workers was an emergency situation. Now, with that being said, the, one of the reasons I called the attorney was back in May, um, I had to go sign an employee referral. And at that time, um, when Michelle and I were privately in the room, she was very upset, and she wanted to know who wrote Tracy up when she did wrong, because nobody was writing her up for the things that she was getting accused of. And she was also getting accused, everything that was on the list of the write-up for Michelle, Michelle said Tracy had also been accused of, like being called the racist, um, and being rude, and all of those things were written. She said that when Tracy was in a bad mood, she had to go to the church and cry during her lunch hour.
That was when I first started.
So, what I, well, this is what she told me in May. So, I sat on this for a little while, because I don't like controversy, and I did not want, I just honestly didn't wanna deal with it, because it, it was upsetting, but at the same time, it was brought to light, well, what do you do if, in this situation, who was writing up Tracy, I had not considered it before, it was not something that I had thought about. I sat on it for a few weeks. During that time, the council president informed me that Tracy had been continually sending messages to her, do you have those?
Yes, I do. I have a copy of them.
Michelle has a copy of them.
About Michelle, and basically picking her apart. I just want y'all to have a record of those.
Like I said, we don't always get along, nobody, no two people locked in the same room all day long will get along all the time. It does not change my view of her as a boss, though. She's still a good boss and still cares about the city, no matter what, what she says about me personally, y'all have balls.
Tracy, I'm sure she has, and then there's media, some of those opposite things. Um, so that was, my concern was, I wanted to find out how to protect Michelle in this position, where that she did not feel like, um, she had to go to the church and cry during lunch, or that she was being picked on, and find out how to write Tracy up, if Tracy needed a write-up. Because I was given, when I started, the mayor's guidelines, so to speak, from nineteen-twenty or something to this effect. Um, that was the only thing I was given. So, I will look at that camera and say I was clueless about what the job duties were. Um, I still go, is that my job? I don't know, there's not a list that I have been given yet of what the mayor's duties are. Michelle did tell me, Michelle Jordan, our attorney, did say that I may figure ahead, and so you guys have to take the lead on all that, and it had to be brought out at a public meeting, because I would never have brought this out at a public meeting otherwise whatsoever. It has been eating away at me since May. Okay? The second issue that I contacted her about was this email. This is just one part of the entire, um, strand of emails from the head of FEMA. Back in, about three weeks ago, I received a phone call at around six forty at night from FEMA, saying that we had not turned in our documentation, we were in an ineligible review, and they needed it pulled to be streamlined. Um, I immediately reached out to Tracy about this, because she had told me multiple times that it had been submitted and it was done. It was the Sally stuff that Jason and Tracy had worked on. I had been told multiple times that it was done, everything was there. Um, on Friday, the, okay, that was around June the thirteenth, that that call took place, that evening. I immediately reached out to Tracy, um, and emailed them back. Then I got a, an email the next day, or maybe two days later, saying that it could not be streamlined, because we had already missed our dates for that. Um, I asked Tracy, the lady gave us till, her name is Audrey, she gave us until the twenty-fifth of June. Tracy assured me that everything would be turned in the twenty-fifth of June, that she and Jason would work together on it, and it would all be turned in. Um, on the twenty-fifth of June, I messaged Tracy and asked, was it done? At which time, she forwarded me an email where she had requested to have until Monday to turn it in, because Jason was off on Friday. I immediately called her, because she had known about it all week, to ask, why didn't you turn this in prior? She said that they had talked about it, but when she started to do it, I'm assuming on Friday, is that right?
We actually talked Thursday.
Okay. That, that it was, um, no, it was on Friday when you, when I got the paperwork saying that, when you requested to, to add the extension until Monday.
That's, that's whenever I spoke with Latoya on Thursday, she asked me to request that extension.
So, it was yet again extended. Um, Tracy told me that Latoya had not uploaded the information, and the previous person had also not uploaded the information. Audrey Cooper, Audrey Diaz Cooper, the head of FEMA that sent this e-mail out, did an entire string of all the emails that I had never been attached to. I'm sorry, I did not have time to print those today, as we've had to go get medication for Steven. But they go all the way back to January, requesting the information and saying, we've not received your information. You have uploaded some files, but we have not yet still received all the documentation. Those are all in an email, anybody that wants to can take my phone and look at those. Now, that I've had to embarrass us and do this, because it, I can't stand the fact that this had to be done at a public meeting, it really, really, really upsets me and hurts my heart. Now, with that being said, I have told the council the information, this is what I had tried to reach Michelle about, because when, I had spoken to a couple of council members independently, and they wanted to find out what the process was for writing up on this. I, because it was so late on Friday afternoon, I was going to contact you on Monday, obviously Mondays are a little crazy, so it was Tuesday when I called. And that is the information I have for the council.
And I can tell you that that information was uploaded, actually was emailed to two different EDMGs, the two previous ones.
I'm sorry, I may interrupt, but is that the same one that you just said, you responded back to one of them, stating that you could only go back to the phone, your emails, because they automatically deleted?
That was... Yes, ma'am, because they were deleted from January before.
The emails do go back all the way to...
This is January twenty?
January twentieth, I was attacked, um, Mrs. Cooper did attach the emails to me, that she had been back and forth with Tracy, and also Donald Gordon, and they go all the way back to January twentieth. Um, saying, saying that she multiple times requested an extension. Um, and, uh, they were reaching out to her, and several of them saying, is this project going to continue, because we have not received any more documents?
There was a PDMG before Donald Gordon, and that was Jonathan Larby, and that's who received all of those files.
And if anybody would like to look at them, they can see where it says that we have received some files, but we are still missing this document, this document, and this document. I couldn't print them, but I did have them.
So what documents are being used?
Oh, but let me just say that I did talk to Ms. Diaz, and, um, Tracy did get all of the information, and she did not get it in on Monday, she did get it in on Tuesday. And Mrs. Diaz, uh, went ahead and reinstated the FEMA project and took it out of an ineligible review. So we are continuing forward now with the, with the FEMA project, just to let everyone know.
The reason it was in ineligible review is because there was ten thousand dollars submitted, and they would only allow twelve hundred dollars of that.
That email describes it, what she's talked about, describes that, where you responded, and they still explained that all the documents had not been submitted, after you sent that updated information.
Everything had been submitted, there were two projects that were combined for that ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Actually, it was three projects were combined, that I had split up.
Mrs. Bell did call me on that Friday afternoon to tell me that she, when she resubmitted, um, she needed to submit it, she did not submit the correct amount of debris removal to start with, and for it to get possibly approved, she needed to reevaluate the numbers and resubmit with a different figure.
And then there was, was about when the other request was made, and the deadline was back there again, and then the correction filing there is...
The information went in on a Tuesday, and all I'm doing is relating the information, because I was told I had to do it at the meeting.
Who, who didn't submit the correct amount of debris?
You, according to Mrs. Bell.
I submitted...
And then I called you and told you what Mrs. Bell said, and you said, yes, she called me and told me to do that.
I submitted waste management invoices, which had the amount of debris on it. Someone had recorded it incorrectly, but they recorded it as one point five cubic yards instead of one point zero eight tons.
Big waste management's fault, not yours.
I don't know whose fault it was, I submitted invoices that showed one point zero eight tons.
I'm gonna answer your question, Candice, and, you know, equipment, I'm not, you guys two got Tracy, it will be the council, the board. But, and I appreciate what you do with it.
I, listen, I didn't...
I know you don't like digging in and, and, um, city business or checking on things, but I appreciate it, uh, from my standpoint. And Michelle, I appreciate what you do with city, I know, and I talked to both y'all. And this comes from me, as a council member, and I've been here going on fourteen years. It's a shame, on record, that we got blindsided the other night, it was wrong as a council member, and it was wrong. I hate to see the city in front of baby paper, as a council member, it looks bad on us, but the thing was, I've discussed this issue. I've discussed it with Tracy the next day about the pay raises. I have no problem giving none of y'all a pay raise, we ain't living in the past anymore, you know, and our clerk, whoever it may be... You know, and our clerk, whoever it may be in the future that's still crazy, they just owe those $20 an hour. I have no problem. That's from me now. I'm a one vote. But just like Jason, I have no problem. Jason making those $20 an hour. There's $20 an hour this day and time no money. I know. I work every day just like Jason knows about that, his son. But when the issue started, what made me mad the other night? You know Tracy knows and the council knows. This issue was brought from Public Works. And the, and the council got blindsided the other night with y'all's pay raises. And the thing is, I have no problem. This is the thing that y'all missing from my standpoint. You can't give our clerk a $7.5 raise at one lift on our budget right now. Turn around and give Public Works a $4 raise. Turn around and give our other Public Works a $2 raise when the council don't know what's in the budget, first of all.
And this is our first financial statement we've had over a year.
And we got projects out here that we get through, just like the floor. You know, y'all know, just like we did. You know, it has to be fixed and that's one of our, our items on the agenda. But when you looking at spending $16,000, $18,000 off the floor, $16,000, $18,000 going underneath this building, where does the city get the money? The city's not, y'all know, you don't work in that office. We don't. But, well, I got mad about it the other night. I told, we was blindsided, the council was blindsided. It shouldn't happen the way it happened. Y'all gonna get your raise when the budget's done. If God's with you. That's as simple as that.
Can I say something to what you're saying, Joey? Is that a reason for other people to try to headhunt and try to chart, put a distance between me and the person that I have to work with? I feel like this, with the little list of things, I know that I've made mistakes. I was learning, like I said, I was new to this business. But to, to pull me and give me a copy of things that I have done wrong, like the person was holding the list against me to make me maybe doubt Tracy or feel bad or be mad at Tracy that I wouldn't defend her because she's still a good boss. I made mistakes.
Let me answer that because I'm the one that personally gave you that coffee because I knew that it was going to be presented to councilor. And that was actually sent to me along the numerous phone calls. That last date on that was making me poor. And I gave that to you on a personal level because I didn't want you to be blindsided. It wasn't to set anything between you or Tracy or your team or anybody.
But it looks like Candace is holding things against, for me as, as sitting here, I feel like Candace is attacking Tracy.
I'm one person here, but I've heard everything tonight that Finn said and it's my understanding that, because I have a lot of questions. It's my understanding that she had questions that she needed answered and she needed all that. And it all just kind of came together and I believe that that's what she was explaining earlier to everybody.
And I actually called because, and my husband is here, for the past month and a half since May, I have been worried about you because you stood in the office and cried to me that she was mean and a bully and you had to go at lunch.
That was when I first started, right? Because I used to, I said, used to.
You did not make that clarification. So for the past month and a half, I have sat and worried about you and talked to my husband about how worried I was about you and the situation that you were in. And that is why, after Becky gave me all of this information, I finally reached out to Michelle because I didn't want you to be in that position. If that clarifies anything.
Like I said, when I first started, it was hard because she, it, it was hard when I first started. I will say that. And she knows it because I told her that.
Well, and I, I'd like to add something that Joey said a while ago. As far as the, the raise goes, several, several meetings prior to all of the raises being brought up the way that they were. The justification in that is that we as council, in meeting after meeting, knew that there was an issue that needed to be handled immediately for the outside workers. It had nothing to do with male or female. It was stated that the outside workers needed pay and they needed it right then. And also, one of the first persons that brought that to my attention was Tracy. And we had several discussions on it. And it wasn't until just a day or two before the meeting, was there anything to do with anybody else's pay discussion?
It was the wording of it that upset everybody. It was the wording that, it's the wording that the guys, or Tracy doesn't deserve this much, for it. That hurts.
Well, I don't know if you said Tracy doesn't deserve that, but.
The mayor did.
I turned around, I, I can, I can reference that.
I got it on tape.
When she, when she made the statement and said, I can, I'll take full responsibility of that and I'm sorry I interrupted you. But when she, when Tracy made this statement, do you realize if you give him a raise and not me, that he will actually make more money than me? And I said, and he deserves it. And he deserves every penny he gets. It's not about Tracy not making as much money as him. It was about him deserving the money that he makes.
Right, exactly.
Can I say something? I don't want to give you, we had citizens that came here for our meeting and suggested that these guys need to raise. Citizens. It wasn't all council. We had some citizens that came and wanted, said, suggested that they get a raise because of what was going on with this, with this road out here. It was constantly repairing pipes. I mean, they, it was, it was bad. It was bad for them at that time. And there was a citizen, I know of one, that said that they deserve to be raised. So now, who pays us here? Whose city is this? The citizens. I mean, if a citizen comes in here and I'm not saying that they didn't say, they just said the guys, that's what they said. They didn't mean it like that guys, they meant the city workers. They might have said guys, but that's not what they, that's not what they meant. They were going to exclude you all at all. And this is another thing, when we said it in the beginning, nobody said anything. How long did we say we was going to give them a raise? Did you say anything, Tracy? Did you say anything, Michelle, when we first suggested it? No, you didn't. Nobody said anything. So why didn't you say something then? Why didn't y'all speak up then? Why did y'all wait till it all was going through and then all of a sudden you see a different story? You, nobody, we brought this up when we, how long ago? Nobody said anything. Neither one of you said anything. Neither one of you said anything.
Neither did the attorney, which I'm pretty sure was in some.
Nobody said anything.
Every time everybody threw a fit was at the meeting the other night when we were blindsided by.
You should have spoke up. Why, if you had an issue with it, why did you let it go this far? All you had to do is say, what about us? You didn't. You didn't say, nobody said anything.
My point was, I thought that everybody was under the same, we were all on the same sheet of music. We knew what was going on. We knew why we were doing it.
Doing it in the next.
Because we, and at both the time, the inside workers were told and knew that they would be getting raised. We all expressed that in meetings. So now for it to turn into something different, you know, we all had questions and, and there's business answers that have been given and, and there needs to be some more as far as what went on in the meeting the other night. Which I guess I'll add that to on the next item. But as far as employee pay rates at this time, as far as I'm concerned, my position is that it stands as before the time. I have not changed my mind on that.
Will ours be retroactive then?
That's got to be the will of the council.
Did y'all hold on there? The other night?
We did for the outside.
For the outside workers and that is, that was expressed to the office that it raises at budget time and it be retroactive.
So it be retroactive from the meeting the other night when they said what they did about it because it wasn't discussed prior to the meeting?
Well, that would be the will of the council, but my, my personal thoughts that I expressed to the deputy and the clerk would be that raises at budget once we know how much money we have to work with and they would be retro.
Yeah, and, and that's my point was that at the time that we made the outside workers retro at the meeting the other night, it was because we'd been discussing it since March. We said for the outside workers' raise. Now, if we're going to do that for the inside workers, then we need to make it from the time that they, they brought up having issues.
For all purposes, Michelle, how would you do that? Because you're going into a new budget year. And you're carrying expenses from the previous year to the new. But I'm just trying to throw everything out so y'all get yourself a say in something.
We didn't have funding coming in that would cover essential employees and that is something that I was looking at.
I just wonder how you're going to do that.
For the inside workers.
But when the new budget comes out, that's a different story. A different year.
If that didn't have a meeting then?
We have to read the timeframe on that. You do have a little bit of time when your budget year ends. Go back and amend that. Prior year's budget, but it's not long. I want to say 60 days. It may not be that long.
I mean, I make $11.50 an hour, you know. I take home five, I don't even take home $600 every two weeks. That time a year and a half.
I make less than that.
$500, $80 something.
With 20 years experience, what I'd be.
Yes, we have other employees.
I've been doing that for 20 years. The reason I'm good at my job. Doing this out in high school.
It, it kind of all got blended in with the last, but number four came, the other council. Part of that has already came out in August 13. Since I was notified about two and a half weeks prior to 4th of July, I've been trying to reach out to Skylighters. Initially, it was in an effort to see if I couldn't beg if we sent them a check, would they put it back in place? And then I, I was notified by the clerk at the same time that Skylighters would not be handling our fireworks show. And the reason I was given was because they said that they never received a deposit check. And when I said, okay, then we send them another check, you know, and what, what can we do? Then Tracy said that his second excuse was that, excuse me, that the orders that he had put in were going to be late and some of them were not going to come in until after July 4th. And so, he had moved on from that. And I finally got a call back from him. And at this point, I just said, look, you know, we, we got somebody else. I appreciate it, but I'd like to clarify a few things with you. His name is John Casey, C-A-S-S-E with Skylighters. And I told him what had been told to me and he said that normally, if they had not received a deposit check, that they would have moved on and rescheduled. But in fact, what had happened was that they had not, that, and that we, the city issue used them in prior years. The check was always supposed to be there by April 4th. The check never showed up April 4th. Still has not shown up. We know that it wouldn't even now because Tracy canceled it. But that, he was never contacted by the clerk. The first time I spoke with her was when he called and notified for about three weeks and a half weeks, about the same time she told me that he wasn't going to be able to receive a call. He wasn't getting shit anytime. I wanted to clear that up to the council because I know a lot of people have questions and we've all gone there.
Can I respond to that because that is absolutely not true?
If I can finish my sentence just then. I wanted to let everybody know because I know that I was really upset when I was told what I was by Tracy and I wanted answers and it took quite a while to get a response from anybody. But that was what he had to say about it. He said that any other time, usually they would have moved on, but in the instance, this is just not what happened. He, he did the follow-up when he wasn't getting his follow-up from them. And I'm sure that that caused Tracy people upset.
I actually emailed him one afternoon to find out if he had in fact received that check. That is why he called me and told me that he had not. I can provide a call me about email.
Well, that's fine. I'm just telling you that I finally got to speak with somebody and that's what he said. So if you want to do that.
That is absolutely just not true.
I think that since the fireworks show went so well and they were not able to get the fireworks from China, that we should go ahead and move forward with the company that we use anyway from now, from now on, because I think they, I mean, I think everybody enjoys it. So. Ms. Olin, you have something.
It's for those of you who don't know, I have cancer and I'm starting a lot Tuesday and then I don't know what kind of treatment I'm going to have. So, I don't know when I'll be doing treatment, when I'll be doing, whatever. I love being with you guys and it's the only place I get out. But if I can't do my part, then I won't be here. So, I really need to find somebody else. I, I've even been processing tickets for years. He's a, he's good. I worked with him when I first came home. But I love all of y'all and I, I, please don't feel sorry for me because I've had a wonderful life.
You know, you've never been nothing but a, you've never been nothing to this city but a public servant. None of that, whether you're an athlete or you're not, as a commissioner, I want you to let you know that your services have been great.
Thank you very much.
And it's such a pleasure to work with and instrumental to help the service. Have a lucky one.
I want to amen that.
So, how do you want to handle it? Do you want me to stay and then get somebody or?
I'll be the governor.
We have to have another election.
Yes, I have a message to write.
About the charter. We would, we'd have to hold an election.
When I came on the board, they said, I should sit.
If the vacancy is within 90 days of the regular election, the council can appoint a member, but at any other time, they have to hold a special election.
Been on it?
Yes, our house. Going in March.
So, what do you want me to do? Want me to continue to come to meetings and ask you to?
We want you to do what you feel comfortable doing.
You're more than welcome to, um, stay, call in, or you don't have to show up.
Yeah, as long as you.
You don't have to resign.
As long as you have three members here in a person, you can appear remotely. There's no way she would have it all.
How long does it take to, to see them?
We won't do an election unless you resign.
Right. If you want to keep your position because God's going to heal you and you're going to be able to be here, then you go ahead and do that. And you can not come to the meeting.
Get over here.
But you do a special election, yes?
I'm a little lazy. I like to know what's going on.
The attorney has something to say.
Your charter requires that you hold that election within 20 days of the vacancy. So you have to turn that around really quick.
So that's what I'm saying. Have you made up your mind of resigning? I mean, she was asking.
I have no idea what they're going to be thinking after two, I know it. When you go to surgery. Then after that, they'll, they'll need one kind of treatment. From there, I mean, there's no way that I could take that email crap, blow it up. I think you actually don't do that now. They don't do that now so much. They give you something now before they give it to you. What, what if I haven't made one after? You'll be fine.
If you decide, if you decide later that you will resign, you may be the one that, you know. What would I need? Making wine here like a hair of a bitch.
I mean, the nice deal come up here telling us to go to the nice deal game.
Hey.
You can hear the same thing. You're fine.
Hang in there.
Hang in there.
I can handle it.
You're not being, you're not saying that. You'll be fine. If you don't feel like coming to me, don't come.
So, your cousin had stage four and he is 100% cured.
So you'll be fine.
I'll try, okay?
What are you doing? Okay. I, I'm not done, but I'm done for the night. I had this, I'm sorry, Joey.
I got three.
Well, I, I mean, I got a raise.
And I just listed council ten notes and, and, uh, Kansas note. Saturday we had to get some colors and I got a hundred, I have to go over here, a hundred and eighty something dollars of material to build the stage, uh, give Candace the influence. Just letting y'all know. And, uh, second thing I need the council to adjust my work there for last month and this. I had five busted lines under my trailer. Jason and Chad have, have been down there under my trailer coming down. But I think I finally, finally got it fixed. But, uh, that's all I have. So, one more, one more thing. Signed at the fire department. Stravsky went on vacation. He sent me two pictures and still working, still keeping my ideals around. Name ball with the sign, but as soon as I get it out, I'll get the picture before we get it made. But, uh, as soon as I get it, I'll get the picture. I won't get it made.
Okay.
Yes.
You want them all to come in?
They will. I'm gonna get it. They will. That's all I have. I just need to get some.
I need verification on something I can talk on my air. Joey, you, you said it. Um, there, we all know there are quite a few issues that have taken place over the last two meetings. I had some questions about it. I'm, I'm not sure if there should be some written reprimands. Um, I thought that the mayor did that as far as the department heads, that's the way it always was before.
Michelle said I do not, not under the charter.
So who, who doesn't? I know Joey said the council, but-
The council. Which is, which is why I had to say this tonight because she said I had to do it at a public meeting.
In the past, when you've had to, to appropriate to discipline of, of public work, so the, the clerk, who was done, despite that it's in a public meeting, extremely uncomfortable. I acknowledge that a hundred percent, but-
So it's not a written reprimand like it is with every other employee? It's something that you do in a meeting?
You all are in a unique position because you don't have any, um, management really in, in your city. You don't have a city manager, you don't have a city administrator and your mayor, under the charter, the only duty really is, is just to, to sign on behalf of the city.
Well, it's the same charter that we've always operated under and Mr. Gary, you were mayor at one time and I remember you did a lot.
The, uh, president of the council always wrote-
The president of the council did.
When I first-
But they always had another-
But there was always a set, okay, so.
Well, there is, I think there's some paperwork somewhere to line that up.
The president of the council would do it, but they always have another person with that person. You don't do it by yourself.
And I remember, I remember the mayor and the president, the mayor doing the writing and the president witnessing. But it was all done in private. It was not done at a public meeting. That's why I'm trying to clarify. The ins and outs apparently are way different for a department head.
Yeah, but they always did it privately.
So is it the same for all employees with the council president?
The employees who are hired and fired directly by the council have to be, they have to be disciplined in a public meeting when you're all meeting together as a-
Okay, so in the past, Joey, when you were president, I know that you wrote the letter to get Joey in the meeting. It was done in the office. So what's, what, what I'm asking is, where is the policy change at that changes that?
Where is the policy?
There. I don't think there is one. When we're following your charter and aligning that with the sunshine law, the, the only way to do this is in a public meeting.
So is it horrible in a public meeting or are you supposed to top something up and present it to the person in the council?
That would be a, a choice for the council. So that you're not in an extremely awkward position?
I know that a previous public works director was written up more than once and it was not done in public meetings. It was the one prior to Jason and, and he was terminated to me and I don't have the other product, so I'm just trying to figure out when did, did that change?
Does that hold off?
Yeah.
The only, the only disciplinary actions that I was involved in took place in meetings like this.
Yeah, and they were, they were terminated. As far as other than on campus, it wasn't write-ups or my handout.
We, um, Michelle Cook was disciplined and the deputy clerk was also disciplined. The previous deputy clerk, I can't think of her name.
Christina?
Christina was written up by our clerk. Never canceled.
No.
She was terminated by council. She was written up by the work.
Written up by the clerk. Well, she was the supervisor, remember?
The clerk. The clerk supervises the de, the deputy clerk. The public works director supervises the, the street department and the council supervises both the supervisors.
That's my confusion and I think that was the mayor's confusion. It's confusing. It was. Any given circumstance, are we supposed to air everything out in a council meeting and writing?
No, please don't. But you're saying-
We didn't.
Why don't you just draw, ask Michelle to draw something up where-
Well, we, we did try to address some of these issues with the, um, proposed charter amendment. Um, part of that was eliminating the mayor.
But that's got to have before the citizens voted and that hasn't passed because that's, that's no accord we can actually take right now.
But can, can you draw something up where is, is the mayor in the president? So you're not up here in the room?
So the issue is going to be because the charter doesn't authorize any individual council member to act on their own.
Yeah, and I don't think they should. I think it should be all councils.
Then if the council wanted to delegate some of its authority to, um, to one person, say like the, the council president, that action would still be subject to the sunshine law. So you'd still have to call a public meeting and you'd still have to let the public be involved in that action.
How does that even finish? Now, I don't understand that because it's, I understand the public's bigger than, but also we've got employees that got files.
Yes, they're written up.
They have write-ups in them and it was done, it wasn't done here.
Well, I, I-
On the day.
I think that the reason is, I, I might be wrong, is, um, the council president or the mayor or whoever the council president and whoever the mayor is or if they don't have a mayor, but if one person is responsible for that and did not lock an employee, then that could be a, an issue right there. And that is why it needs to be done by the entire council. That's just my thoughts on that.
It, it, but they never, if someone got, if they had a write-up, there was two people already there.
Why?
It was only two people. You didn't do it by yourself.
The mayor can speak to everybody.
Right, the mayor can and the council can delegate their authority, but the issue is that that action is still subject to the sunshine.
But couldn't they, couldn't they vote that next week to delegate the authority to write whoever they, they need, need necessarily write up to a certain review to the mayor to write them up?
They can, but it, but it's still subject to the sunshine.
Well, yeah, they're voting to make it take that action. So that, that's the order.
But would each action still need to go before, each action would still need to go before public?
But what that does is give you a chance to talk to whoever and maybe work it out behind scenes. It just comes to the meeting, both being agreeable, say the problem solved.
Well, how do you find somebody? How do you terminate somebody? No, right. You terminate somebody.
Future, right.
It has to be brought up at a public meeting to terminate.
Well, and irregardless to our policy, which is leave bar and pour again, or however you want to say it, it's a, Florida isn't right to work today. So I just, I, I just wanted some clarification on who's supposed to be doing more? Because we went from one set of rules-
To a method.
To another within a two-year period from when I first came on council. We're doing it two different ways now. Accord, and I'm saying this to Michelle, your attorney, he, he said we need to do it this way when I know before Joey as president would write people up in the office and council notes out of it, but we weren't handling the meetings. And I've been a part of terminating employees in meetings and I didn't handle it right. So, you understand why I'm confused on?
I do. All I can tell you is that I wasn't a part of those disciplinary actions. So they were, if you come to me and ask me, my answer can be you have to do it in a public meeting and that's, that's always been my answer. But I'm not necessarily involved in, you know, the day-to-day operations of the city.
And as far as I know, the perspective hasn't changed on writing, writing employees up. Our perspective hasn't changed. It's, it's intercollected.
Then also going away from the matter, just a second. I, I have an issue with the way you and Michelle responded to Tracy in that email without responding to the council first before you said anything to them. That's individually pointing out one employee without going to the council first, without notifying the mayor or the president. Why, where did that come from?
Tracy was the only person that I spoke to about the issue and it was just by email. So I only had the information that I had.
But you, but I mean, whenever it comes down to it, sooner or later, what's going to happen. And we all know it's sitting right here. What's gonna happen, chances are.
I didn't know anything.
Yes, there's, there's possibly gonna be some kind of lawsuit that comes up on that. And if it does, you basically give her a letter stating that she's gonna give whatever she asks you.
I don't think, I don't think that was my response. My, my concern was that these kinds of cases are really hard to defend just in general and the optics of the decision. I, I'm trying to give you an objective look, you know, at, at what are you going to be potentially facing from this decision and that, that opinion hasn't changed.
Well, Michelle, I'll ask you this. When you received the email from Tracy and, and we did not get anything on that except, Michelle, please, if you have revise, if you see necessary, but I'm sure that there was more to that email than what we were given for the mayor to read. But it came from Tracy, the city clerk during city hours on her city email and it was personal.
Yeah, it was not personal.
I, I didn't take it as personal.
It was the city clerk.
From what I'm hearing, it, it seems personal.
It was the city clerk trying to protect the city.
Trying to protect the city?
Yes.
Whenever it was referred to. I'm good with it.
I can say I, I did not perceive that as personal to Tracy.
Okay, was it personal then, and I'm asking everybody this at this point. Was it done on city time during city hours with city equipment, city tape, city copies in? All of that, was that done with, um, Tracy and Michelle on, on city time?
Actually, a webinar that I attended on Tuesday.
So you got all of this information that we were provided from a webinar?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it was printed out, but you're saying it's okay because you got it from a webinar?
It was a webinar she had already scheduled. She didn't know what webinar it was for.
I scheduled it two, three weeks prior to passing it.
So you did not contact the Florida League of Cities and get any of this information?
No, ma'am, I did not.
Yeah, I'm not, I believe I did for the league.
No, ma'am, I have not.
I thought that you told me that she's supposed to call the league cities to get the information.
It was not the Florida League.
That is what the attorney advised me.
It was our insurance company.
The insurance company.
Who put on that particular webinar.
It was, I told her, I said, that's weird that they're waiting. She told what the webinar was about and that's funny.
Yeah, it's weird.
It is weird.
It just happened to be the day after the meeting.
And the reason that I asked about your insurance company is that most of them now offer employment law advice, the hotline that you can call when you have H R or employment questions and that's free, we believe. Well, and so that was my recommendation was that to reach out to them. I know a little bit about lots of things, but employment law is a very specialized area and, um, given the event that a claim was filed, your insurance company is going to be handling that. They'll just wait to convince council and so they like to know about these things as soon as possible. So that was another reason to reach out to the insurance company is see their position on whether or not there might be a claim. And I followed that. I was in Orlando at a conference, same conference that Mr. Hawkins was at. I was in class, um, all, all day driving Tuesday, but then all day Wednesday and all day Thursday. So I was kind of doing this on the fly. So I followed up that I didn't get more information, but it seemed to be pretty straightforward and I didn't think that it was personal to Tracy.
It seemed really personal to us at the meeting that night, but I'll say it again.
I, I followed up like I said, I was in class and so I wasn't-
Well, I'm not, I'm just, no, I'm not just saying on your behalf. I'm thinking on your behalf and that is Tracy and Michelle is the way it came off to me in the meeting with it. It seemed personal. Um, it, I have several more things that I, I'll wait, um, for the next meeting on. So if nobody else has anything, I'll call for messages or-
Real quick, Timmy, the fan that was in the, um-
We got a second here. Okay. I, I already said it's a gun.
I, I always like to, I have to tell them. Is that on the gender proof? Y'all, y'all-
What is supposed to be on the gender?
The self has to, brought back to how we discussed. Okay, that's the only reason. It was a long thirteen second wait.
Also, Tracy, uh, from our last meeting, um, update on the, the old, um, fan name? Was it gonna be on this?
I haven't seen any updates yet.
Okay.
Did the roofer come or not?
We have two roofers here, but I don't have any emails from either one of them. I haven't had them provided.
I've got something. Y'all are all done. Um, can I get some movement on one thousand two hundred and forty for an award ceremony for baseball to end the spring baseball season? Um, it's kind of late here, but I've just been with everything going on with, uh, trying to get baseball wrapped up in the Fourth of July. Um, but I'd like to have an event so we can get those spring baseball and softball kids afforded and celebrate them for their good season.
You're asking to have an event?
We're, well, not to have the event, but I've got an expense of one thousand two hundred and forty for the baseball so they can sign and, and hand those out and, and then feed them that day. Of course, we've got plenty of hot dogs left over for the Fourth of July event, so we don't have to spend any money on food right now. And I will get a sponsor. Um, it's not a couple to pay for to reimburse it. So it's not like it'll-
I don't have a problem with it, with the council.
Celebrate the kids.
How, exactly. And how did, how did concession do?
Um, I don't have an official, official tally. I'm just off the top of my head right now. We are about eight hundred and some change profit on our organization. That's where we can take out our Santa Fe and a couple of hot dogs.
Can I have a match of good journal?
One more. Sorry. Um, pageant, Ms. Vernon pageant in September. Ms. Casey handled, um, and took on the, uh, Firecracker pageant and she seemed like she enjoyed it and the girls were asking, um, because it was kind of fast, an opportunity for another one. So she's looking at the possibility of at the end of September doing one and then she's already secured with the high school athletic, uh, athletic director, Mr. Tranquil, on them being involved with homecoming in October with the high school during the homecoming parade and the homecoming game. She was-
That's great.
Of course. Our mistress of pageantry, you need to go first. Mistress of pageantry, you go first.
I agree.
My good job.
I'll say it.